Good evening, ladies and gentlemen from the Board of Education. Dr. Maleko and Mrs. Sossen. With me today, Representative Wall and elementary is Emma Hicks and Manny.
Submissions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. We could want to stand right here, Emma and Danny. Great job, thank you. Recognizations and acknowledgements. Oh, I'm sorry. Superintendents, okay, so we're gonna skip over that. Start with agenda items.
So if we could just start by observing a moment of silence. We have a former student that passed away, a former student of Fortson High School. And so our thoughts and prayers go out to him and his family during this difficult time. Thank you. So I do want, I have one agenda item. I do want to mention, we have one retiree, Gerald Driscoll, 25 years of service. We thank him for his years of service and we congratulate him on his retirement. If we could acknowledge him right now, I appreciate that.[191.69][191.69](applause). And we will likely see more as we get closer to the end of the school year. It always get a higher number of retirees that come in, so that is, so that's it for agenda items?
Non-agenda items, do we have any?
So I have Mr. Wall for the, just a quick update and his team for the Infrastructure Committee and the potential bond.
Good evening, Manning Presment, members of the Board. Just a very short update today, no slides or anything, just it'll be very quick.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Maleko. My name's Paul Wills with Plant Marine Cressa. And similar to our last monthly update, we're here just to provide an update on the progress of the bond assessments and ultimately leading into a capital plan. As of last week, we've completed all the walkthroughs of the three high schools, the middle schools and elementary schools. We're currently moving on to the supports facilities, so for instance, this building, transportation and operations. We actually had a chance to have a kickoff meeting with the high, three high school principals. And tomorrow, we're gonna actually tour two other districts who've kind of gone through capital projects in the past and look at some of the media center renovations, some of those collaborative areas, and some of those other improvements that may be contemplated here within Dearborn Public Schools. Our meeting with the middle school and elementary school principals is gonna be March 20th and March 21st, so we'll be at their monthly meetings. On Wednesday, we're actually sitting down with Mr. Ringos and Tim and Don and his team to actually start looking at some of those preliminary facility assessment findings. After that timeframe, we'll then meet next week and the week after with the high school principals, really, so it's a very ritter of process as we go through this capital planning piece. Ultimately, our goal is, you know, to be meeting with the building and site team as we really start honing in on what does the tenure capital plan look like, but also what would those potential bonds, so a good example would be a November election, let's say versus a March of 2020 election. And we talked a little bit about that last meeting. So we've identified roughly, for example, $10 million of roofing or parking projects that could take place once the bond was passed. That's something that could be designed and implemented fairly quickly. With a November bond, more likely you'd have a sale of bond sometime in that December, January timeframe to allow the district to actually design and implement some of those projects in 2020. If a March election was ultimately selected by the Board, once you get funding sometime in the April, May, there's unfortunately not enough time to get those projects designed and bid and constructed in that timeframe. So for example, if you were to take a look at a roughly a $10 million project, a one year delay is about a 3% to 4% increase of building materials and labor costs. So again, roughly $400,000 to $500,000 of additional costs should you wait for that particular year. The good news is on your tenure capital plan, we are including escalation factors for all 10 years and then plus. So projects that are done this year or even next year, we're already taking a look at what would those be, you know, good examples, turf replacement, we know you're replacing one of the turfs, that would still be on that 10-plus year, but we want to be able to capture those. So from a, from a bonding standpoint, we thought it'd be good to give you one example of that November or March timeframe. And we're gonna have further discussions as we go through this, but again, I know we, we kinda wanna highlight that going forward. So where are some other activities? Again, we started to draft the preliminary qualifications, so again, work with each of the principals, looking at the utilization of each of the facilities, the number of students, because that's what the Department of Treasury will look at going forward. So the best news is, we're currently on schedule with our task activities. We thought it was just important here to kinda give you an update of our next steps throughout the next few weeks, and I'll turn it back over to the President and any other questions the Board may have.
All right, trustee Barry.
Did we ever, ever get the final numbers if we were to go out in November, what the cost would be for the election?
To run an election?
Nothing formalized yet, we were estimated at $50,000.
Any other questions? All right, then, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm gonna move along in my commentary here. I just wanted to mention our superintendent's advisory council and the Board is aware of this, in fact, the National School Board Association is promoting this, but also the Michigan School Board Association. And Ms. Dean Charles, and I know she's here actually, helps me with the coordination of my advisory council from the high school, and then we have middle school. One of the things we've been working on for over years to possibly have some students come to Board meetings, to be advisors to the superintendent. They're already advisors to me and they're on WhatsApp and they communicate, especially with social media, they give me a lot of great advice on how to deal with that, and Instagram and all the other things, but it's gonna get them involved a little bit, and so what we're looking at doing is moving some of the setup around. They will never have an official vote by law of the Board, they couldn't by the state of Michigan law, but they would be here to kinda interact with the Board and have a student voice, and so we'll likely have them at the table over there with Ms. Dr. Chokel and Ms. Peterson, Ms. Farage, and we'll kinda change the setup. We'll have like a little orientation, so it may take them a little while to get comfortable, so we don't necessarily expect a lot initially, but it's just a way to get them interacting with Board members. And again, it is being promoted on a national level, so I just want to clarify that they won't have any official votes, but just like when they meet with me, they, you know, we can pick their brains and get their input, and you know, the student voice is so important, and that's why I'm so optimistic about our future, not only in Dearborn, but in the country. So I just wanted to get that out there publicly, when you see a couple of students and there may be a rotation, but again, we're phasing this in, so it'll be a work in progress, and I can tell you the students are very excited. I try to bring them to a lot of my important meetings, especially when I meet with the legislators, so it's a very positive. So I just wanted to let everyone know that that's coming in the next month. Boundary line exemption process, I believe Mr. Mashur is here to make a few comments, because that's boundary line seasons coming up soon, so we appreciate him.
Good evening, everyone. Season started early, actually, but yes, we are already getting quite a bit of boundary exemptions hardship petitions to us, so I just wanted to kinda recap the process that we're using now. So one of the things that we did is we switched the form a little bit to include the parent email, and also, we removed the part that where parents get to choose a particular school. And what we do is, we get the applications, and we have a four-person committee, those four people will give the application, initial screening process, kinda go through the hardship from there. What we're gonna try to do is, if there's certain situations where we can accommodate families with a school, for example, they say, well, I need kids' club, then we'll look at the schools offering kids' club that are not far, as opposed to letting them kind of cherry pick schools, if you will. So we look at that and we'll offer, you know, two or three options that make sense to the family. The other thing that we're gonna do is in certain situations, for example, you might have a fifth grader at one school, or somebody going into fifth grade at one school, and then they have an elementary sibling who's gonna be starting kindergarten, for example, so we would do like a one-year, you know, situation where the, so both children would be in the same elementary building for that one year, and then they would go to their home school after that. With regard to our letters that we sent out, as opposed to sending generic letters, we're gonna send letters, specific letters for pretty much every petition, so it's going to take a little bit more time, a lot more time actually, but at the same time, just try to give parents at least a little bit more of an understanding as to why the decisions were made as they were. Then after the initial screening committee, the parents will get that letter, then they have a right to appeal if they have like new evidence or different information as to why their appeal should be heard. The appeal will be heard by a seven-member committee, that would be of administrators and staff, and then that would be the final decision. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna ask Ms. Farage to come up, Executive Director, Student Achievement, the Dearborn High Theater. There was some communication, and so we just want to be proactive with the, just wanted to mention with the Young Fives program and the early childhood, I'm very supportive, I know the Board is, and we've expanded. In fact, when I was superintendent, we had two classes of, I think it was one or two of Young Fives, and one of the things I saw was that it was beneficial to expand that across the district, because it helps our students, and it also allowed parents to petition for a waiver, so they could start if their birthday was between September and December of the school year. And so, very positive, we're now up to 14, we've expanded this. As you know, we do have different space issues. One of the things I do want to make clear though is that when we have a Young Fives, it's kinda like the preschool, it's, it's open to anyone in the district, it's not just for that school, so it doesn't belong to the school boundary in the district, and it's always been that way. And so, I'm gonna let Ms. Farage speak to specifically a classroom over at Lindbergh.
Good evening, everyone. So as Dr. Maleko mentioned, we are at 14 classrooms in the district now, and we are not planning to eliminate any of the classrooms. We, if we do think of relocating a classroom, it would be due to the enrollment in that specific school. Currently, the Young Five program was designed in the first place for students who turn five years old by September 1st, and the administration and the staff do not feel that the student is ready for the kindergarten rigorous curriculum. So sometimes we give them two years of kindergarten, and many of the parents in our district choose to register the student in kindergarten instead of Young Five, and some of them may opt out of it, thinking that if the student does not succeed in kindergarten, they can repeat another year, and this is the choice they most likely would go with. In many schools, we did a lot of convincing for parents, because we truly feel, feel that the program is beneficial for students who are not ready yet. I'm gonna give you three years of trend data, statistics from Lindbergh, about students who chose to enroll in the Young Five program. In 2018-19, which is the current year, seven out of 16 enrolled students in Young Five are Lindbergh students, although the classroom has 14 students. The rest of the students were available, but they chose not to, and they opted to register in kindergarten. Six students who were eligible, they stayed home, we did not account for them, we did not know where they went, so they were not part of the kindergarten program. In 17-18, eight out of 28 Young Five enrolled students were Lindbergh area students, the rest were school of choice or from different schools. Last year, there were two classrooms, this year there is one, due to law enrollment in that classroom. In 16-17, nine, nine out of 26 Young Five enrolled students were also Lindbergh area students. So again, we have enough students in the Lindbergh boundary to fill the classrooms, but they are selecting not to participate in that program. There were communications this year between the school administration, the district, and different stakeholders about the possibility of not having the Young Five at Lindbergh, but having it in a different building and allowing the six or seven students to choose the building that they wanna go to. But in place of that, the Lindbergh administration is thinking that they would have a preschool based also on community needs and feedback from the community. So Mrs. Teba, the principal, has communicated with the PTA about this possibility, and she is still collecting feedback. She has a form on her blog, trying to get community output specifically from, from Lindbergh to see if she's gonna open that program. And again, it continues to be a conversation about that decision, and normally from September till, till January, we continue to recruit students for that program. So this is the status of the Lindbergh Young Five program.
Do we have some questions?
I have one. That's a one or the other, right, at Lindbergh, it would either be a preschool or a Young Five, right?
Yes, but if it's not the Young Five, it would be in a different building. We will continue to have the 14 classrooms district-wide.
Okay.
That are currently in 13 schools, and if anything, we look to add more Young Five classrooms, not eliminate any of them, because of the value of the program.
So what you're saying right now, because I did receive communication from some parents who have their children's school of choice to Lindbergh and, and were concerned about the loss of the Young Five program at Lindbergh, they, what's being looked at right now is if we don't have enough for a class, that those students who were interested in it would be given the option to go to a Young Five at, say, Hague or-
That's geographically close.
Close to them, that, that would be suitable, that they would transport their student. In trading off a Young Five program for a preschool, have, has there been a lot of interest from the parents at this point in time to support that?
For preschool.
And are there numbers there for preschool?
According to Ms. Teba, she's collecting feedback on that too.
So she's just exploring the potential?
Yeah, and she, she has mentioned also that she has seen interest for preschool from the community, and that's why she's exploring these options.
So it looks like the Young Five program is more that a lot of parents just haven't really caught on to it as, as an option?
Correct, and this is the case in many schools. And when I was a principal of a school, I tried very diff, very hard to convince the parents that this is the right program for, for their child, especially if they were born between September and December, when we have the waivers. And some of them think that let them spend two years in kindergarten, and if they do not succeed, then we can make a decision then. Actually, I had to meet with a couple of parents in different schools this year, and the parents still opted out, so that's the situation.
So either we have to do a better job in educating our parents about the concept, or, you know, because they're kinda still stuck in the old-school idea of just hold them back another year and have them go through the same program.
But I think you still have a lot that see the value, that's why it's expanded to 14, so it just may be in, you know, within the Lindbergh region, a lot of them just didn't wanna opt for those. But I still think, it's just, it's a philosophical viewpoint. Our administration believes that this is effective, but sometimes the parents choose they don't want to, that's their right. Having said that, with the expansion, and I can tell you, like, for example, at Salina, it was very successful, and they've added, I think they have several over there, and other schools too. And in it, actually, initially, the first one, this was under Superintendent Whiston, did, was opened at Lindbergh, it was the concept. And it does make sense too, because then you get the students that they can start earlier, and if they're just not ready for that kindergarten, part of it is just the age, you know, my, my daughter's a November birthday and my son's a January, and just that year, that makes a big difference. And I remember my son, he was really ready, but my daughter, you know, she needed a little more, more time.
All 14 classrooms are almost full, so it's not that we were short of students for Young Five, it depends on the school.
Just the location.
Yeah, the location.
So we need to at least communicate with the Lindbergh parents who are currently there and would like to maintain that that, the option isn't gonna go away, might change the location.
Right.
But they'll still have the availability of it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, trustee Barry.
What buildings around Lindbergh, yeah, you have that?
We have Hague, and currently, we have Long.
Is it at Howard or?
So we have 14 programs in 13 schools at, so we have a Young Fives at Whitmore Bowls, Salina, River Oaks, Hague, Oakman, McDonald, Lori, 13 buildings, so that's-
So Lindbergh is like right in the middle between Hague and Whitmore Bowls?
Whitmore Bowls, yeah, yeah.
Gear Park.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farage and Dr. Chokel. So I wanna give a shout out to our social workers, I mean, when we go through, you know, they do great work in the district, it's Social Work Appreciation Month, and when we have tragedies that unfortunately occur in a district our size that, you know, we send them and, and for grief counseling and other things, and they do a lot more than just that. I know Dr. Bezy Gates is on the administrative team, but it's all the social workers. I've worked with great social workers over my 24-year career in Dearborn, and I just wanna give them a shout out and let them know that we appreciate the work they do, if we can give them a big round of applause.[1229.16][1229.16](applause). This month is one of the, my favorite months, March is Reading Month, I know some of the Board members have been partaking too, and some have been maybe in the same building as I'm coming and going, and, so I was in, I've, that started, and I've been in schools, and it's very exciting to promote reading throughout the district, not just reading, and one of the things I try to send the messages, and I know, and I could just say this to parents and my own kids as well, my own son, you know, sometimes turn off that Fortnite and pick up the book, you know, after school. Now all the kids wanna know my role, oh, it's a superintendent, what do you do? One of the first things, oh, you're the one who closes schools. Well, yes, that may be true, but I also, I did cut a lot of them a deal, I made them a, we had to come up with an agreement, and they, and I said, if you, if you read for 30 minutes a day, every day outside of the school, I'll be happy to give you a week off in April. We've got a deal, they've all cut the deal, from those schools, they're off the first week of April. But they, and we almost shook on it too, with all the, the teachers were witnesses, so.
And you haven't, haven't put them in yet, yeah.
So they were very excited, you should've seen the cheers. I was more excited, because I knew now they're gonna read more, but, so anyways. School closures, just a quick update, we're at six days right now, we hope we don't have any more bad weather. If, right now, the way the law is, if we were to close again, we would technically have to come back, schedule another day. We can apply for a waiver up to three days, it's not guaranteed, so I just wanted to let everyone know, that's what I do remind the students when they're asking me to close it, so that's fine, but do you wanna come back in June? Some districts are going to the end of June on different parts of the state, because by law, we have to follow the law with the state mandated date, so that's just a quick update there. The other thing, I, I'm excited to mention that I was invited to meet with the Governor last week to talk about her budget, myself and superintendents from across, a few superintendents from the tri-county area. We had a couple of the union heads, in fact, Al Larrini was there to represent the state MFT union, and, so it was very positive. I just wanna let you know that she unveiled her plan, she's asking for our support, it's kind of a new, you know, it's a new process that we're not used to. Normally, what's happening through our organizations, tri-county alliance, superintendent association, school board, we kinda find out, and then we're trying to talk to the legislators and say, no, don't cut this, don't cut that, or add here. This is now where at, we actually have a seat at the table for consultation prior to, which is really nice. And so her plan, and I think it's a starting point, we've talked about the research finance collaborative that Mr. Wall and I had presented on, you know, that the funding system in Michigan is broken, and those of you that may have seen the data that we ranked 50th out of 50 states over the last 15 years of education growth and funding, we also know the roads are an issue. So anyway, her plan is with the road tax, what she wants to do is to stop what she calls raiding the school aid fund. So what's happened to the legislature is they've taken the school aid fund, which constitutionally should be for P-12, and they've moved it to roads and other things, they did some of it in the lame duck. So her plan is, by getting this tax on the gas, what she wants to do is stop the shell game of moving money all over and taking from the school aid fund. She wants to put monies that belong in the general fund back to the general fund, that's one of the big budgets, and the other is the school aid, those are the two big budgets that the state controls, the legislature. So by doing that, we're looking at over $500 million increase for education, it would mean $375 in her plan, mind you, it's supposed to pass the legislature, there's gonna be negotiation, but there's a potential for $375 per child. This will be the highest increase we've seen in, in many, many years. She's also earmarked money for special education, at-risk funding, and literacy coaches. We've never seen these kind of categoricals discussed the way she, the way I heard today. And the other one, which was nice, and this is sound familiar, water filtration and cooling stations, something that we've started here, we've put one in every building, and so there's money in her budget to earmark about $60 million for those hydration machines, and you can see one right out here, I'm, go to the schools, you'll see them in. And so that was something, if you recall, that I put out of my budget, and I paid for one out of my discretionary budget, with the support of the Board approving it, for per school, so we could get more for that, and they've been very positive. And the Board, you see, all these is from that right here, we're reducing plastic as well, so I just wanted to point that out. And so I, I, the superintendents were so excited coming out of this, honestly, I gotta tell you, and there's some good people, but we haven't seen this kind of a dialogue in quite a while.
And some of the money also designated for colleges and universities that should go to the P through 12, and what did she just say about that?
So, so right now, they take, they're taking money out of the school aid for that. She wants to put it back in the general fund where she believes it belongs, but also give an increase to the college. So she wants to put it back in the general fund, her plan, but there's gonna be increase. And I did talk to President Cavalluna, and I know he's a, he's a, got a visit coordinated for next week with her, so.
For this week, actually.
Or for this week, sorry, for this week, I'm sorry, yes, and I'll be there with, with him, so.
The, the real trick is, is she has to pass the budget.
Yes.
So it's, it's, it's all, you know, right now, it's, it's a wonderful suggestion, but...
It's a start.
Yeah.
It's a start, it's a start that we ever have heard, and, yes, yeah, thank you.
But we don't know what we'll end up with.
So, just, we appreciate all our union groups in this, we have great union labor relations, and I just wanna let you know that Mason and I believe will be going to represent the district for our, we were getting a Labor Relations Award for the school district in May, and, so we're honored that, we, we appreciate all the union heads and all of our workers, that Dearborn is this city of working collaboratively, and our model is work. So I wanna commend all our unions, our Board of Education for working together in collaboration, and eight human resources for the negotiation of these contracts that passed with a very high, high majority percentage that hasn't been in the past. So I just wanna mention that, that we continue to value our, you know, the labor rela, and I was glad that the union heads were invited to the meeting with the Governor, that was also sending the message too. Just going along, I'm trying to get through these things real positive, we had the index scores that came out, along with graduation rates, we're again at 95%, so I wanna give everyone a big round of applause, the Board.[1630.11][1630.11](applause). We have index scores that came out very positive, I know Dr. Patterson had presented on those. Having said that, we still have work to do, we know that, we're not saying we're satisfied. Areas in college and career readiness and other things that we're gonna continue to work with the college. And with that, I wanna just say too, we've been working on this for three years, and I'm very excited, and I don't, I believe President Cavalluna is here, but we did get approved, and Majid Fadlala's here, congratulations, we got approved from the state for the pre-education early college, we've been working on it, Mr. Fadlala's done a great job expanding those programs, working with the college, and what a great thing that we can actually pay for our students to get an associate's degree. This is so positive with the collegiate academy, and so I wanna commend Mr. Fadlala, Ms. Peterson, Mr. Cavalluna.[1676.51][1676.51](applause). And the Board for supporting us with this deal, I was so excited, I think we, the President and I signed it, and we were like, yes, we got it passed, so we've been working on it. So thank you, very exciting thing. I also wanna thank, thank the Dearborn Education Foundation for a great event, I know a lot of trustees were there last week, they provide a lot of funding and support for our students, so I wanna thank all the community. It was a great event last week for the Mardi Gras, and money was raised for our students, so appreciate that, and that's it for my commentary, but very positive news moving forward.
Okay, thank you so much. Next question, recognition and acknowledgements, commendations. And we have the seniors from Dearborn High School today that will be reading the commendations, and that is Ali Shaheen and Angelique Krosak.
Commendations to the Dearborn High Men's Ensemble, Chamber Choir and Junior Caleb Reese, for receiving Division One ratings at the Michigan School Vocal Music Association District Solo and Ensemble on February 9th. They are now eligible for states in April.
Commendations to Hassan Hamud, a Fortson senior, for being named National Merit finalist for the National Merit Scholarship Program.
Commendations to the Dearborn High School Boys Varsity Basketball Team, who won the first MHSAA district championship since 2005, with a 50-42 win over Livonia Franklin.
Commendations to the Dearborn High Robotics Team, which finished as runner-up in its first competition of the season. The team also received the Engineering Inspirational Award.
Commendations to the Dearborn High Girls Basketball Teams for their successful seasons. Varsity finished the season 11-9. Varsity finished the season 11-9, junior varsity 16-4, and freshmen 16-3.
Commendations to the AP Computer Science Principles Class at the Dearborn Center for Math, Science, and Technology. The class taught by Ms. Kimberly Schaller earned the College Board's AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award for the number of female students participating among more than 18,000 high school students that offer AP courses worldwide. DCMST was one of the only, uh, 685 recognized, recognized for its amazing work to engage more female students in computer science.
Commendations to the staff and volunteers at Henry Ford Elementary School for their successful STEM night on February 7th. And a special thanks to organizer Kathleen McCormick and student teacher Anthony Hindozza. The popular event brought out hundreds of students and family members to do hands-on activities related to science, technology, engineering, arts, and math.
Commendations to the staff and community members who assisted Henry Ford Elementary during a time of sorrow and tragedy, tragedy after the death of a student last month. Special thanks to our special education department and the team that came to the school and supported them throughout the week, including Abir Bazzi, Dr. Christina Kalai, Lisa Haddix, Zainab Buzy, Latifa Sabah, Haura Ricks, Nada Mosin, Violet Sowery, Leslie Aduata, Aliyah Bedun, Reyna Mata, Mer- Maryam Alui, uh, Oum Kalosa Nasser, Faza Nasser, and Dr. Rola Bazzi-Gates.
Congrat- congratulations to Gwendolyn Lambert from Whitmore-Bollis Elementary for taking second place among sec- among second graders in the Michigan Earth Day poster contest. The Michigan Department of Environmental Quality invited Lambert to a recognition event in Lansing on April 24th. Her poster will be turned into greeting cards. Thank you.
Acknowled- acknowledgement of donations.
Should I, Ms. Peterson's going to come up for that, please?
I only have four to read this time. Last time, I think I had 17. A donation of art books, frames, mapboard, and easel has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by Bill Tater to be used in art classrooms through the district. A donation of a Galileo telescope accessories and software has been offered to William Ford Elementary by Betty Miller to be used in classrooms during space unit to observe the moon and the stars. A donation of $526 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Khalid Abdullah to be used for PBIS, and a donation of $800 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Khalid Abdullah to be used for PBIS. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Great.
Yes, Chuck DeBeere.
I'd like to say something under commendations. Yesterday was the sports banquet, and they recognized some of our star athletes, student athletes. We had, uh, Grace Doversack from Dearborn High represent her school, Tabitha Unfrack, I know I butchered that name, from Etzel Ford for the girls, uh, and the winner was Renel Hussani from Fortson. They also, from Dearborn High for the men's side, the young men's side, we had Benjamin Clark from Etzel Ford, Maxwell Marion, and, uh, the winner, student athlete of the year, was also from Fortson, Abraham Jafar. Abraham.
And these, these are awards from the city?
These are awards from the city, but they awarded our students. Uh, Abraham, uh, among all the sports that he played, was able to carry a 4.16 GPA average. He will be attending U of M Ann Arbor playing football there, so. And just a, just a little plug for the Dearborn Youth Football Program. I had the pleasure of watching him play for six years. Congratulations to all of our students.
Next, please. Next, we have citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or their questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board president reserves the right to limit times. We'll start with our agenda items. First, we have Mr. Ali Imad Fadlallah, who will speak, proposal for Imad Fadlallah.
Good evening. Salaam alaikum.
Just a moment, please.
Proposal for Imad Fadlallah. It's the proposal of the naming, and, yep.
No worries. My name is Ali Imad Fadlallah. I'm Imad Fadlallah's son, and a product of William Ford, Woodworth, Stout, and Fortson High. I live in Los Angeles and flew in for this occasion. On behalf of the Fadlallah family, we are not here to help convince the board that you should name these two memorials after my father. I am not concerned about the memorials. I flew in specifically to answer some of the questions raised and to respond to a few of the statements made during the February 11th board meeting when the committee brought forth this proposal. Trustee Thorpe, you stated, what makes this one individual different than all the other individuals throughout the history of this district to afford this level of recognition? Uh, you continued, quote, "I don't have an answer for that, and I don't know that anyone does." Uh, you added, quote, "As a district, do we come up with some base policy of things we look for when we're considering naming something?" And you, and you closed by restating, quote, "Again, what makes him different than everyone else who has had a great impact for many years throughout the district." Trustee, uh, Petlicov, you added, quote, "Everyone has a different experience with individuals, and everybody is going to have their favorite over the years of who they feel has given to their school experience." Uh, trustee Thorpe, I am genuinely with you on one of these statements that, uh, maybe as a district, we do need some base policy of things we consider. Is it the data that supports a leader's impact, like state test scores? Uh, because if so, then our answer to what makes Imad different is the fact that he led a previously failing middle school to outperform other Dearborn schools and the entire state on average, um, and MEEP scores, reading, writing, and math? Uh, or is it rankings? Because then my answer would be that my father led Stout from among the lowest-ranked to among the top-ranked middle schools in Michigan. These stats sadly aren't true anymore. Uh, or is it how many kids are moving on to top universities? Because then I'd remind you that when my father entered Fortson in 2005, just a handful of students had been admitted into top universities, like the University of Michigan and Ann Arbor, and by 2010, over 120 were admitted into U of M with 80 attending. That doesn't include students who went on to other top schools, like the many at Harvard. There are dozens more stats for both schools, attendance, dropout rates, graduation rates, et cetera, to address statements that seem to reduce my father's accomplishments to people's favoritisms, or to make it seem like there aren't some objective measures of success that he could stand on. As I've just demonstrated, that couldn't be further from the truth. But it is true, uh, as you've heard from the committee and several trustees, that my father was a lot more than stats, that it was the intangibles that made him who he was. A man who showed up to kids' houses when they skipped first hour, uh, pickups and drop-offs when they didn't have a ride, a man who treated janitors and bus drivers with the same dignity and respect as teachers and superintendents. A man with an unprecedented approach to discipline. I think of my freshman year at Fortson, before he was principal, when some of my peers vandalized my home, knowing who my father was. When the police identified them, my father had them come over and sit on the front porch. Then he made me serve them, matwendu and chips ahoy, as he loved on them, asking about their parents and backgrounds. Then he got up and began carefully hosing down and scrubbing off the eggs, and I joined him as the group watched us. Each one of these guys grew to love my father and treated me with a newfound respect after that day. Or I think of four years later, when he took over as principal of Fortson, and on his first day, he asks a young woman in the main hall to get off her phone, per building policy, and she replied, "Who in the F are you?" When he told me the story, he said he just memorized her varsity jacket so as not to forget who she was, and went back to his desk and sat down and said to himself, "Who in the FMI?" He actually reflected on her question. It actually gave him the idea to conduct the assemblies where he introduced himself as the new sheriff in town, and he sat the young lady in the first row of each assembly. Instead of sending her home, he capitalized on the teachable moment. These stories were my father's norm. This was him each and every single day. You know, in closing, as an educator myself, who coaches leaders of some of our nation's largest districts and state departments of Ed for a living, I don't just speak as a son or former student when I say it is our duty to lift up leaders like my father, to do our research and be aware of their contributions, and to honor them accordingly. If this was done in a fair and objective manner, we know you'd be discussing which school building my father's name may be added to, or which future building can be named in his honor, rather than questioning what he's done or whether we should set new precedent with two small memorials. Finally, to the committee and the community, we thank you, we honor you, and we state firmly that this is just the beginning. It would take at least a school building to appropriately honor my father's contribution to this district, and to suggest otherwise is an insult to his revolutionary leadership.
Next, we have Reema Imad Fadlallah, also addressing Imad Fadlallah's legacy.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Reema Imad Fadlallah, and I am a proud product of Henry Ford, Stout, and Fortson High School. In addition to being my father's daughter, I am a beneficiary of his leadership, both at Stout and at Fortson High School. I want to first thank the committee for their hard work in drafting and pitching this proposal. I also want to thank the friends, family, and community members who made it out here today. This means more than you know to myself and my family. I want to start by saying that this proposal is not for my father. This proposal is also not for my family. This proposal is for Dearborn Public Schools. And while we are proud to be here today, we want to reiterate that these two memorials are quite literally the least that this district can do to honor the blood, sweat, and tears that my father poured into not one, but two of our public schools. Like my brother, I am a former educator. I am currently at the Ross School of Business, pursuing my master's in business administration to help solve the same issues of educational inequity that I was exposed to during my time with Dearborn Public Schools. And like my brother, I am not here to influence tonight's decision. Instead, I am here to respond to a point that was made during our initial board meeting. Trustee Petchlikov, you met, you mentioned, I believe we've never simultaneously recognized somebody in two locations, and then you added, and when you do that, then you have opened the door for everybody else to ask for those similar honors. The first response I have to that is brief. While this motion to honor a leader in two locations may be unprecedented for this board, it is not unprecedented for this district. Both Fortson and Etzel Ford High Schools are named after Etzel Ford. My second and more urgent point is to question this value we are putting on precedent to begin with. As Judge Salem has so eloquently quoted, this pres- the precedent is not what it was yesterday, it's what we make it today. Every single thing my father did at Dearborn Public Schools was unprecedented. From curating his very own tested and true professional development strategies, to repairing a previously broken relationship between our largest high school and its surrounding community, to masterfully balancing the delicate line of empathizing and holding his students accountable, to sending countless students to and through our nation's top universities. When we put students first, shouldn't unprecedented leadership be what we stand for? And even more urgently, some of the precedents indirectly set by Dearborn Public Schools, admittedly, are antithetical to our mission, students first. I would like to urge us to question what we stand for by reminding us of some of those ceilings that my father was able to shatter in order to keep us honest to this mission. Ceiling number one, Fortson kids do not go away for school. Before my father's leadership, the University of Michigan, a school in our figurative backyard, might as well have been 1,000 miles away. My brother spoke to the quantitative impact my father had on this front, but I want to speak to the qualitative one. Today's Fortson High School students do not see college as a dream, but as a tangible expectation. Ceiling number two, leaders at Fortson do not engage parents and communities in their child's education. In the years prior to my father's tenure at Fortson, our largest high school experienced record-setting turnover in leadership, resulting in a toxic relationship with its surrounding community. My father made it his top priority to break down this invisible barrier between community and school, and by doing so, he reinforced what any parent knows is true, that they should be deemed the most important stakeholder in and asset to their child's education. Ceiling number three, leaders do not transform not one, but two Dearborn Public Schools. My father reimagined the educational trajectory for students at two of our district's public schools, and let me remind us that he was appointed by the superintendent as someone uniquely positioned to revolutionize a failing school that also happens to be the building serving our district's largest student body. Additionally, because Stout and Fortson educate entirely different demographics, it is not a stretch to claim that my father is one of very few leaders in this community who has had both a depth and breadth of impact on our district's diverse group of students. I reiterate these points because had my father been paralyzed by precedent, all of these above-mentioned ceilings would still hinder our students' growth today. I hope that the school board will question its unproductive attachment to precedents insofar as they prevent us from doing what is best for students. And my third and final response directly addresses the latter half of the concern, that is, that this would open the door for others to ask for the same. And I'm wondering, isn't that what we want? Isn't not having enough room to award excellence a good problem to have? And honestly, not a problem that we currently deal with. You claim that it opens the door. You claim that it opens the door for other leaders to ask for similar honors, but I believe the door we are opening by exposing our district's leaders and students to this level of excellence is one that invites them into emulate and surpass the level of impact that my father's legacy continues to have on this community's young people. Running out of room to award those who are deserving of recognition while aspirational seems to me like a beautiful problem to have.
Next, we have Mr. Jalal Mughni, who will also be speaking about honoring Mr. Imad
Good evening, respected board. Good evening to my dear community members, family, and friends. I stand here humbled to even be one to speak of the legacy of Mr. Imad Fadlallah. I stand before you as a product of Oakman Elementary, Woodworth Middle School, and Fortson High School. I was a graduate of the class of 2009 under the leadership of Mr. Imad Fadlallah. I'm a practicing attorney, a published author, a public speaker, and one who was able to co-found a nonprofit organization in our community that inspires thousands of our youth in Dearborn and its surrounding areas. Those of you who know me know that it's out of my character to speak of my own accomplishments, but I only say this as an indication of the leadership of Mr. Imad Fadlallah. Because I, as a youth who attended Fortson High School and who was inspired by his mentorship, can say that many of my own accomplishments, as well as the accomplishments of my peers, hundreds, if not thousands, of other students were due to Mr. Imad Fadlallah's mentorship and leadership. Now, when we speak of impact, the late Mr. Imad Fadlallah not only was able to impact so many lives, but through these individuals, through the youth of our community, through the students of Dearborn Public Schools whom he inspired, they go on to inspire thousands of more students. In brief, dear respected board, I don't think the conversation should be about naming a hallway, an atrium, or a meeting room after the late Imad Fadlallah. The conversation should be which, the conversation should be about naming the next school after Mr. Imad Fadlallah. This is not an exaggerated response to some of the concerns that are mentioned. Rather, this is a reality that so many community members have lived under the leadership of Mr. Imad Fadlallah. I hope that this board can see with the community the effect and the impact and the influence and the inspiration of the late Mr. Imad Fadlallah, and make the proper decision in honor of his memory and his everlasting legacy.
Next, we have Dr. Elder, who will also be speaking to the board about Imad Fadlallah legacy. legacy.
Well, I think a lot has been said, but I'm gonna say a few things from my perspective. I work with Imad at both Stout and Fortson. So, the question is, what did this person do that stands apart from educational leaders? And I know he pushed at both schools, he pushed for greater opportunities for students to allow a more equitable playing field. He convinced the community to take a risk and to trust that their child would be okay to think big, for parents to take a greater risk by convincing them to allow their child to cross Evergreen Road. And you may say, it would have come eventually, maybe, but not for years, because we live in a collective community, and someone, they needed someone that they can trust. So, the seeds were planted, and if you look back at the data, you will see that the number of students pursuing higher education was taking a turn. It was slow, but it was moving, and it continued to move, like Ali said, in larger numbers. The numbers seeking institutions beyond Evergreen Road, those were seeds that were ultimately a factor in increasing the graduation rate. So, his philosophy was always, do what is in the best interest of the student. It was always my baseline, my threshold, when I was indecisive about things. But unfortunately, some people misunderstood that. He took the punches because he was in vanguard. Sometimes it was unfair, unjust, or cruel, but he reminded me that he has thick skin. In the end, we were able to break barriers, some self-familial, some self-imposed, and some intentional. For me, he supported my vision to pursue students beyond boundaries of higher ed, which others could not see. He did not inhibit student growth, but empowered me to delve into my job despite a variety of barriers. When students began to get accepted to U of M Ann Arbor, the threshold was raised. When we got students into Harvard, not twice, not once, not twice, at least five of my students, the threshold was raised again. Many of those students returned back to other students to give back to other students, and the cycle grew like a domino effect. In Arabic, we call that sadaka jadiya, a fundamental quality to benefit one in the here and after. No doubt, the district has had wonderful educators who made great impacts in the lives of a community, but this guy will be forever remembered in more ways than one. So, if you fast-forward, our parents and students are now highly motivated not only to think state competitive institutions, but national and international experiences. He held a relationship with the community that rarely happened and took the punches for them. Maybe one day, when his memoir is released, and Ali, that's a message for you, we will know the magnitude and the value of Imad, an educational leader, and the degree of gratitude for which he was regarded by a community. Thank you.
Next, we have Mrs. Lenny Badun.
I sent an email to most of you earlier, so if you indulge me, I just want to read that so it is on the record, and then I have another brief point. And unlike his humble children, I am here to influence you this evening. When DPS community lost Imad in such an untimely manner, it was a very hard pill for us to swallow. Though he was retired from the system, his impact had not ceased to exist. To this day, his impact does not cease to exist. If you walk through the halls of any of our schools, you will see his work through not only programs he has implemented and philosophies he practiced, but also in the people. In my immediate family alone, of my three grown children, two of them work in the DPS system. They were mentored, taught, and impacted by Imad as a teacher, an administrator, and an advocate. If you walk through your very own administrative building, many of our DPS leaders will tell you that it was Imad Fadlallah who placed them on the track and path of education, and it was Imad Fadlallah who inspired them to excel. Outside of DPS, his reach is even further, and if any of us had the time, I could list for you how he, and he alone, stood tall and firm in so many instances to support and advocate for the betterment of our community on issues that no one else would dare take on. He loved our city, he loved our children, and he loved education. Please understand, I am not criticizing any of the individuals our schools are named after, each of them honorable and worthy of the honor. However, standing on the ideals of education, the impact of education, and the inspiration of his work and character, I believe none of them are more worthy than Imad. I believe he deserves a school named in his honor, truly. I also know that that is not an easy task. To strip a name off a building in order to place another one is not something anyone would request. So, what you will have before you this evening is what I see as a humble effort to honor one of the great educational leaders of our system in our time. I do hope that you will look at this not only as an honor for him and his name and family, but moreover, its true benefit, the honoring of the institution with his name on it. It is the institution's honor to carry his name. I do hope that you will look at this not only as that, but you will see, as you walk through the halls of your buildings and talk to the teachers, talk to the administrators, ask them about Imad Fadlallah, and you will see his work through them and through today's students and tomorrow's students. So, today, yes, it is a meeting room and an atrium. It is, however, my hope that someday, we value his work for what it was and honor a school with his name. I ask that you hear the people who speak here to you this evening with an open mind and an open heart. I hope that you let Imad Fadlallah's work inspire you the way it inspired so many of us. I ask that you honor the district by placing his name where it can remain impactful and continue to inspire. Thank you.